Good evening. Thank you for joining us this evening for the October school board meeting. If you would like to join me for a word of prayer, that's how we normally start. Lord, we thank you for fall and the beautiful colors and the trees and today's much-needed rain. Be with us tonight as we honor achievements in our district and make decisions for our district. Please continue to watch over us and keep us safe in the days to come. In Jesus' name, amen. Okay, and we will start, if I can get my Chromebook to work, with our recognitions, the best part of the meeting.
All right. Good evening, everyone. We are going to start with individual student growth. We have a superhero with us this evening. Kellen Schaaf. Kellen, come on up. Kellen is a sixth-grade student at CBIS. He raised $1,300 through his Black Belt Project to put toward delinquent lunch accounts for our students. So, Kellen, you then tested for your Black Belt in Taekwondo. How did that go?
I achieved my Black Belt, and this Saturday I'm at my ceremony for achieving my Black Belt.
Congratulations.
This is Megan and Chris Schaaf over here. They're my parents, and they've helped me along getting in able to raise this money.
What was your inspiration behind it? I mean, I know you probably hear a lot about kids that are struggling with lunch. What made you think of this project for your project?
Julie, Mrs. Meyer's fourth-grade, her third-grade teacher at Creekside, actually, her son goes to my Taekwondo. And when I was trying to think of an idea for my Black Belt project, she helped because I was thinking about kids or like people who are less fortunate and they don't have food. And she thought, I see a lot of kids who don't get like stuff filled out, like the papers filled out for free lunches, and their parents don't have the money to keep up with the free lunches. And so, like keeping them in the black or like keeping them above.
Well done, well done.
With regards to our guiding principles of collaboration, we have a couple of additional recognitions this evening. Michelle Bright. Michelle, if you would like to come forward, please. Michelle Bright. Michelle has completed the required courses for the Indiana ASBO Voluntary Certification Program. Her certification designation is Human Resources Specialist, which requires 71 hours of instructions. So, congratulations, Michelle.
So, with her tonight.
Do you want me to introduce who? Oh, okay. I brought my husband Jeff and my daughter Addie. I brought them. They didn't bring me.
Michelle does a great job. This is actually one of the additional opportunities for certification. A few years ago, she was studied for and passed her professional license for human resources. So, we're very honored to have her helping lead us and make decisions on HR side of life. So, congratulations.
And our final recognition this evening, again, for collaboration, Pam Kissel. Pam, if you would come forward. We are excited to recognize data and testing specialist Pam Kissel for receiving Leveraging Data for a Change Award by Illuminate. Illuminate Education is part of a program honoring a select group of educators who are committed to increasing the power of teaching and the delight of learning. Pam was selected because of her dedication and work around empowering educators to make data-informed decisions. These decisions support our students. Pam received this award while at the annual National Data Conference. Again, congratulations, Pam.
Want to talk a little about the project and how you received this award?
Not especially. Alpine, Alpine. I kind of think that it came about because of a project we're working on with our graduation pathways. We are kind of spearheading that through Alpine. I think that they are going to use it with other schools across the state and actually even probably across the nation as graduation pathways become the requirement for high school graduation. So, I think we kind of, I think that was why the recognition came to Franklin.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you.
That will conclude recognitions for this evening.
You're welcome to stay for the business portion of the meeting, but now would be a great time to exit if you don't want to. So, thank you for coming.
Congratulations. Good job, Kellen. That's awesome.
Okay, we will move on to the business portion of the meeting. Okay, and we will start with public and board comments. If anyone in the public has something they'd like to comment on that's pertaining to the agenda, please step forward. All right. Okay, we'll move on to board comments then, and we'll start with collective bargaining. Can we do a report? Okay, communications committee. Just real quick, the communications survey is closed, and at the next meeting, we'll have results to share with everybody. Legislative council?
Nothing.
Mental health?
I'll just report that we have, our next meeting is scheduled for November 19th.
Okay, very good. Thank you. The music council, just a reminder that this weekend is our high school musical, which is high school musical. And I think that starts Thursday through Sunday, right? Okay, very good. Hopefully, everybody will be able to make it out to one of the shows. RDC, we did not meet. And superintendent strategic plan council?
Yes, we did meet, and we're meeting again next week on the 30th. And during that time, we're going to look at the thought exchange results as well as begin to think about graduation pathway. What's it look like for our district as we move forward the next 10 years? So, we're going to hear about that from a host of people at one. Mr. A. House will be sharing some insight on that as well. So, that is 6:30, high school cafeteria. Everybody's welcome.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments regarding anything on the agenda?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
All right, we have a motion. All those in favor signify by the sign of aye. Aye. Motion passes. Very good, thank you. We'll move on to superintendent reports. The 10x presentations, after funding.
Yes, thank you. We are pleased to have two very unique and exciting opportunities that are brought to us by the 10x grant. First, we're going to have Marnie Havner, this is a behavior intervention. Actually, the board got a chance to see this in real-life action. But this one is for the community to kind of hear what she's doing with yoga to help kids and then faculty. And then following that, we'll have Mrs. Williams come up and talk about visiting Germany, where she grew up and kindergarten class there. Yep, yep. Or you take the mic if you want and just say.
There was one upstairs.
Okay. All right. My name's Marnie Havner. I am the Behavior Interventionist at Needham. This is my third year as a behavior interventionist there. I've been at the school for, in the corporation for about 10 years. I was lucky enough and honored to receive a 10x grant this year, and it took me all the way to Portland, Oregon for a yoga retreat to teach me how to teach children, how to do yoga specifically in the school. And that was what I was looking for, something that I could do in the school that was appropriate. I was able to meet and work with about 55 educators, school counselors, PE teachers, principals, and private therapists. And our training was provided by, and the whole thing was provided by, the actual creators of Yoga Calm, which it's been going on about 20 years they've been doing it. This is just like our classroom. Those are the instructors, the creators of the Yoga Calm. Got to visit some areas around Oregon and the coastline. But back to Yoga Calm. One thing that, it took me a long time to find what I really wanted, something that was alongside my passion, my beliefs in working with childrens, with children with behaviors. And one of the things I really liked about it is that it included the whole child, not just a specific behavior, not just a specific problem that we're dealing with, but the whole child. So, it's that integrative learning of the emotional needs, their physical needs, and their mental health needs. And through movement and body-mind connection, we can address all of those things at one time. And this whole child, whole child approach teaches self-regulation, social-emotional awareness and skills, attention, relaxation, mindfulness, character development, and physical activity. And we do all of that through yoga-based activities. Mindfulness exercises, games, kind of games and activities that we do. And we work on social-emotional skills to help improve their focus, their learning readiness, improve their behavior skills, their physical and emotional stability as well. There are many aspects to the Yoga Calm curriculum, but the main focus is this calm activate calm sequence that we do. And we always start with breathing because breathing calms our nervous system. We do poses and sequences to help release energy, physical energy and emotional energy, and also the social-emotional games and activities. So, that helps promote and encourage trust, compassion, teamwork, leadership. And then we always end with the relaxation technique, whether it's storytelling, visualizations, imagery. And it helps develop their imagination, teaches them some self-regulation through those imaginations. A lot of our kids today don't have the imaginations, and it also will help with their academics and the reading and learning there. How I use the Yoga Calm curriculum in the classroom. One of the classes I've been going to is Mrs. Knarcher's second-grade class. I go in between their math and reading block and a restroom break. So, that's a pretty big transition, switching channels in the brain. And we do just about 10 minutes of yoga, but we always start with our calming, our breathing. We do just a very short yoga flow, and it depends on the day. Are they extra chatty that day? Are they full of energy? Are they a little bit subdued? Are they a little bit aggressive sometimes? And so, I tweak the flow according to what their needs are. And then we always end with that relaxation to get them ready back to learning. And then another thing I, we do, Mrs. Spalding, the PE teacher, also had some professional development this summer where she learned some yoga and mindfulness skills as well. So, we collaborated, and she arranged. We have a 30-minute class three days a week, first grade through fourth grade, and we just rotate the classes through. And we actually have a lesson. I create a lesson using the Yoga Calm curriculum, the five principles of Yoga Calm curriculum that we work on. And every pose, every story, every game we do instills one of those five principles. So, we work on stillness, listening, grounding, strength, and community. Two of the ones that we've worked on so far are community, how we support each other, and how family supports, teacher supports, and how even our peers support each other. And now, we're working on listening and stillness in our, in our group. All right, I think I moved it. This is just one of our classes that we're doing. We start with our relaxation. I always have somebody come up to do the breathing, and so, we were promoting that leadership and people stepping outside of their box. We always complement each other. And then we do the calming, the relaxation. Then we do our flow, and our flow, again, addresses a stillness, a strength, or the listening aspects. Now, one of the things that I like to see around school now is that kids are starting to incorporate this in the hallway. When they need to take a break out of the classroom, if they're not taking a break with me in the sensory room, they're, they go out to the, outside the classroom, and they're doing their own yoga poses on their own. I caught a bunch of kids doing tree pose, which is practicing our stillness while they're waiting in line to go to lunch. And normally, they're squarely, they're talking, they're sitting down, they're out of line, but they're all watching themselves in the glass mirror or in the glass cases, seeing how they looked a tree. And then, a group of kids just recently on the Flat Rock trip were having some difficulties calming back down for the night and getting ready to go to bed because it was lights off and quiet time. So, they chose to do yoga on their own. One of the things, or a couple of the things, right now presently what we're doing and what I would like to do and what we're going to do in the future for the, using the Yoga Calm in our school and our classrooms, is that, one of the things I love is that this curriculum works very well with zones of regulation, which we currently do. Actually, the author of Zones of Regulation and the creators of Yoga Calm have collaborated together and have specific training that combine those two. And it also works well with Ross Green's approach, which we're learning as well right now. We're going to continue our yoga mindfulness classes for next semester with Mrs. Spalding for first to fourth grade. We'd like to start incorporating our kindergarten classes a little bit extra squarely, so it'll be challenging. I also do have a morning yoga movement and relaxation for specific students that I know have a difficult time coming to school in the morning, that have a hard time adjusting to getting in the classroom and getting right to work. So, we have about 10, 15 minutes that I work with them. And depending on how they're feeling, it depends on what we do. After we come back from Christmas break, Mrs. Spalding and I are going to do a Monday morning yoga club before school starts. And I also use specific sequences for test-taking. So, before some NWA tests, we did specific sequences to do balance and twists, and that helps open up neural pathways and connects our body to our mind and helps us focus a little bit better. So, I've been doing that before smelling tests as well a lot this year. So, with iLearn and iRead and everything coming up, we're going to start incorporating that with as much as I can get around to all the classrooms. I'm also currently finishing up my certification to be a certified Yoga Calm instructor, and they can use my tools. And once I get that done, then teachers can start using this, this curriculum instead of like the, the busy go noodle, not-for-everybody kind of things, to be more mindful about their movements, be more productive with their little brain breaks in their classroom. And it also helps create smoother transitions between subjects, restroom breaks, lunches, and recess. And I also always use it in my sensory room with specific students that I work with sensory integration with. I can go on for hours about yoga and how it's helping our kids, but, all right. Thank you for the opportunity.
Awesome.
Do you want to do some yoga?
I would miss. We'd love to do yoga, but I'm not prepared at this moment.
Good afternoon. My name is Belinda Williams. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Webb Elementary. My 10x grant title is Kindervoksem im Kindergarten, which means children growing in kindergarten. First, I want to take the opportunity to thank Franklin Community School Corporation. This 10x grant went way beyond the academic level for me. It helped me also reconnect with my family that lives in Germany after 23 years. I hadn't seen him for 23 years. So, this was really an amazing opportunity for me, and I cannot thank the Franklin Community School Corporation enough for that. I'm not going to read this whole thing. I narrowed it down. I've been practicing to get it under five minutes, and I cannot. So, my 10x grant objective, what it boiled down to, was learning how we can socialize our children to assist them in becoming motivated and strong learners. Many of our children come to us without many social skills. So, this is why visiting a country where kindergarten are immersed in socialization will help me improve my ability to teach and support the whole child. Germany is a country where this happens. They believe that children shouldn't start their academic career until first grade, which is the ages of six and seven. So, my first stop was kindergarten. Kindergarten is a private sector in Germany. It is not a public school. It is private. The parents do have to pay for it. And the children in kindergarten are ages three to six years old. The first slide I would like to show you are, these are my German sugarplums. Everyone that knows me knows that I love to call my children sugarplums. And these are just a couple of pictures, me getting to know them and them getting to know me. They were so interested in me, and I was so interested in them. The thing that I just had the biggest awe moment was how the teachers teach. Teachers use the GRR model in Germany. And I was like, wow, I've been doing that for my whole career. So, those of you that do not know what GRR is, it's gradual release of responsibility. It helps them to become independent learners, and that is what they do in Germany. This, this whole activity, the teacher, you can see her up in the middle on the top, she did not do anything for them or with them. She showed them what she expected of them, and the children did everything on their own, and they were creating an activity to show the life cycle of a dandelion. This was the one that knocked my socks off. These are children ages three to six. They do science activities, and they had to figure out what conductors and insulators are. The children cut their own wires. The children did everything on their own. No one helped them. No teachers helped them. They modeled it for them only. And then, the, the items on the bottom are all the items the children went through, and they would check their wires to see if they were insulators or conductors. And then, over here on the poster board, it was just the steps of what happens when they go through this process. And if you notice, it's kind of hard to tell, but they actually, the teachers had it hidden. Up on the top left, they draped it. They showed me to take a picture of it, but the children hadn't seen this yet because they have to figure it out for themselves. Also, what I witnessed is students, they use their own, they have knives, they use their own utensils, they had to cut their own bratwurst, and they were eating, and no, no teacher cuts their food for them, no one helps them. And then, after each child is finished eating, they have to wash their dishes, they have to dry their dishes, and they have to put them away. Complete independence. This is the public school. This is first and second grade classroom. What they do in Germany is they put two grade levels together. So, this is the first and second grade classroom. This is an amazing, just an amazing classroom. I was so impressed. What the teachers do is they use the second-grade students to assist the first-grade students. And the second-grade students, they know what to do. So, if you can tell, they are grouped together, they strat, this, this is very strategically done. They put them together, first and a second-grade student, and then, this gives the teacher the opportunity to work with children that have some great need, that have those deficits, and they aren't able to learn on their own. So, it frees up the teacher to be able to do that. The teacher does teach. She teaches in front of the class, she gives them direction, she gives them instruction, but then they, she sends them back, and then they're on their own. Had to throw funny in here because the floss is worldwide, and the boys did want to show I said, oh, my gosh, I have to show that because everyone knows the floss. So, when I came back to Indiana, I really, really took a lot of, took everything to heart that I learned over there in Germany. And they really celebrate education, especially when they enter first grade because it's the first public, their public education begins in first grade. So, what they do is they make a big deal. And what these are, these are called Schultutes. And what a Schultute is, is every child that enters, goes, going into first grade, the first day of school, they receive a Schultute. It's a cone. And what they do is they fill the cones with school supplies, toys, and candy, and it's a big deal for the children. It's a huge milestone for them. So, what I did is I went ahead and I purchased Schultutes for every student in my kindergarten class from last year because they actually went through this whole 10x grant adventure with me. So, on Meet the Teacher Night, after Meet the Teacher Night, I had them all meet me in my room with their family members, and then I presented them a Schultute, and I thought it was appropriate. Even though we start school in kindergarten, I felt that they were able to be able to experience that love of first grade, leaving my classroom, and just feeling like there's something special because they were the ones that got to experience my 10x grant with me. So, every child in my classroom from last year received a Schultute. Okay, this is where my heart is. After this amazing experience, I have come to realize that this type of socialization of children has been embedded within me due to my heritage. Visiting the German schools confirmed my beliefs in the importance of providing our students with trust, respect, and love to allow them to feel empowered and successful. Every child deserves an education which allows them to grow socially, in which will give them the confidence in learning in a safe and trusting environment, in turn, becoming successful academically. Giving children the freedom to become independent will provide them with the security of knowing they are capable of learning their own independent abilities, along with the socialization of working in a collaborative effort with their peers. This will also empower them to be successful academically, which will give them the confidence in their learning environment to become independent thinkers, problem solvers, creative, motivated, healthy self-esteem, respectful team players, and so much more. We need to support their failures. We need to celebrate their successes and allow them to grow beautifully. Gosh, I was trying so hard not to do that. We need to allow them to grow beautifully because each one of them are so beautiful. So, what I do in my classroom, I have a very independent class from the, pretty much from the very beginning. It's what I do, the first couple of weeks of school, I teach them love and respect first. I think that's so important. These are just a couple of my pictures that I decided to choose. The pictures where we have students reading in the book, they're actually, they're actually running their own literacy stations. What I do is I empower children with their successes in helping others. I have teachers in my classroom. My whole classroom's full of teachers, and I allow them to be able to help their peers. It gives them such a great motivation to do their best, and it gives the children humility, which is so important. And then, the picture at the very top left, that's from this year already. Since we just started school, I don't have a lot of their independence yet, but I want to talk about that top-left picture. to talk about that top-left picture up there. I believe students should have drinks and snacks at their table all day long. If they're hungry and thirsty, eat, drink. If that's going to help you get through the day, then do it. So I had a little boy that spilled his bottle of water. I did not do anything. I did not say anything to those children. I, that class, the majority of my classroom, they got paper towels, they got Kleenexes, and they helped him clean up that water. So I took a picture, because this is how my classroom is, and I love it. We really, oh, I'm so sorry, I'm such an emotional person. We really need to embrace our children and make them feel that they can do anything that they want. That is why this 10x grant meant so much to me, because it just confirmed that what I was doing was what we should be doing. And I just truly believe that children need the opportunity to love and respect each other, and to show us that, and we need to support their failures, not talking down to them, but pushing them and helping them to be their best, because you know what? I don't care how young they are, I don't care how young they are, they learn immediately, they're sponges, and if you teach them independence, respect, and love, they're going to go so far academically. So thank you again Franklin Community School Corporation for allowing this dream to become a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to follow that?
Yeah. All right, Mr. Gross.
You got it. Talk about numbers.
Let's go. Clear the room now.
I can't help but feel I always bring the meeting down.
She's going to get a compliment.
Okay, so first off, I'll start with the budget for this year and where we are. This report shows our third quarter ending September 30th of '19. If you go down to the green line, we're 75% through the calendar year, and we're 73% spent, so we're under target, just where we need to be. There are a couple of areas, if you look at the, the budget column, 12,000 line, special programs, that is a little bit over 75%, that's special education. As you know, our numbers have grown this year, we've had quite a few unique students come into the system, and that's just something that you can't budget for. Jen and I have frequent conversations and work well together, but that's kind of an area where you just have to adjust as you go along, so. There are other areas where we were underspent, so fortunately, that kind of levels out. We're also a little bit over in support services. The support services general administration at the 2,300, or 23,000, and then we're at 80% in support services for students. You know, we've had an influx of students, we've had students with behavioral issues, we've had to add support staff for, so, again, some of these things you just can't plan for, but if you, if you look, the areas that we're over in is support services for students. So if we're going to go over, those are the right areas to be over in. So I think we're right on target, and we should be pleased where we end the year 19.
Thank you. Okay, you're up next.
So on to the action item, which is the final step in the formal adoption process for the 2020 budget. So you have a budget form four, which is a resolution for appropriation and tax rates. Nothing's changed since the public hearing last month. Last year, we requested 57 and a half million, this year, we're requesting 61 million. That entire increase is the referendum amount. So we're requesting a total tax rate of $2.22, but if you recall, we always over-ask, that's the, the game that we play with the state, and this will end up being around $1.75, $1.80 when all is said and done, which is $1.50 for the operations, and then another 25 cents for the referendum. So we're, we're keeping the tax rate level, with the exception of the referendum. So.
Any questions?
Requesting formal approval for the budget request.
We have a motion to approve that, so any other questions? All right, all those in favor signify by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hearing none, the motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to discussion items. Do we have anything?
We do not.
We are not discussing tonight, okay. Then we'll move on to board and administrative comments. Does anybody from the board have anything they'd like to say? Any comments? Okay, no? Administrative, Dr. Cundening?
We are going to have lost its school, and we're all back together again for chapters two and three, with two point of doubt that we knew that it couldn't be here today, I just think it's better if we all stay together on that. So we'll come back to that next month. And then just on the calendar, just a couple of highlights, one is School Bus Safety Week this week, so we'll be continuing to promote that. We mentioned the musical. And then in November, we have Coffee with the Superintendent, and then the high school's going to host our quarterly board visit right before Thanksgiving, so we'll be thankful to see the high school.
Is that correct? On the district calendar, it says CBIS. On what? On the district calendar, it says that CBIS is the closing of the visit. Yeah, I'll make sure it's changed. Okay, thank you.
She's going to be waiting for us. Cheryl's got coffee and donuts.
No kidding?
Yeah, we're not here with Steve.
Mr. Ahouse was waving and told you. So we'll, we'll verify that. And then just a reminder, we did change the Christmas dinner event. We're going to be here on December 5 for dinner, and then we are going to go to a big show, high school choir concert.
Cool. Very good. All right, and then public comments, is it, well, there is no public, so we'll move on, we'll adjourn our meeting then. Thank you all for coming.
Good job.